Okay, welcome everyone to the August fifteenth regular Town and Nequa meeting. I guess our first order of business will be to approve the regular meeting agenda. Being resolved that the Council of Town and Nequa approved the regular meeting agenda for August fifteenth. Move by, Councillor Quonter seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, next we have some minutes. Being resolved that the Council of Town and Nequa approved the minutes of the regular meeting and two public hearings that were held July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three as circulated. Move by, Councillor Sicily seconded by Councillor Madol. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, so we just had a couple of minutes before we have a presentation here, so maybe I'll just take one council report. Councillor Costin Chuck.
Very short.
Okay.
Yesterday, the hand organization had their fundraiser barbecue and the draw for the fifty-fifty. We started the fifty-fifty ticket selling on July first, and we had an amazing turnout yesterday. It was really, really good. The winner of the fifty-fifty, the share for her was fourteen hundred and thirty-four dollars, and that was won by Doris Bonafoy. She won fifty-fifty. Tomlin hot dog sales and donations is one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. It was a really good event. Thanks to everyone who came up to support such a great cause. A huge thank you to the Co-op for donating hot dogs, chips, drinks, and to Murphon, Blair LeBlakland, and Rob Nourstrom for the awesome entertainment. It was a really good event. A lot of people showed up, and a great fundraiser, really good to support them.
Excellent, yeah. Yeah, that's a, that makes for a nice turnout.
Mm-hmm, it's really good.
And that was, sorry, that was where?
Yesterday, in the parking lot right in behind you.
Oh, way behind you.
Yes, parking lot. They agreed to let us set up there, and it was full. Even had councillor, we're in parrot dancing, so that was pretty good.
Smoothly, I might add.
He's quite smooth dancing, yes. I was too busy cooking up twenty-four dozen hot dogs to be dancing. Be interesting, so thank you.
Okay, uh, now time for us to move into presentations here, and we have Mr. Blair Ferguson going to speak to us about boarding cameras. So, the floor is yours, Blair.
Okay, may I give your honor, ladies and gentlemen? The reason I'm here, I've been walking my dog quite a bit the last few months, and you know what, I'm out walking around, and I talk to people that are out with their dogs or whatever, right? And one of the questions that I always ask is like, if you have to go away on holidays or you end up staying in a hospital for a few days, what do you do with your pet? And the answer is always, well, look for the nearest available shelter and hope that they have a space, right? And the nearest one, I know there's one in Mendosa now, and there's one in Erickson, one in Brandon, but still, I think, talking to people, I feel that there's a need for one in town here. So, I don't know, I just came to you guys to see if the town would be interested in maybe doing something to put one up, maybe talk with maybe High Life to see if they would go in on it. For Manitoba Health, that's such a new hospital going up here. It's gonna cover a larger area, so there's gonna be people coming in from further away that may not, or short notice. What do you do on a short notice if you have to have somebody to look after your pet, right? So, that's, I did put a questionnaire out, and if you want to take a few minutes to process those questions, I managed to collect, put seventy signatures on this one. And then I had a couple Facebook posts that I put out to collect a quite a bit of interest too, so... I think there's a need for it here, but the best way, I think, for the town to determine out would be to put somebody out on your own Facebook page and just ask. Maybe have a public meeting or some kind of public forum where members of the public could come and make, or make a case with it. So, I don't know, but... I would like to do it myself. I don't have the funds to do that kind of thing, so any insurance and everything else would be like a killer, so...
Have you talked with our Economic Development Officer, Marilyn, about this yet?
Uh, no, I have not, no.
Because this, to me, this would be like a private enterprise.
Yeah.
And she's phenomenal at working with ideas.
Okay. One of the suggestions, I came down last week to talk to Jeff Braun about areas around town here that might have, be accessible or whatever, but he wasn't in, I saw it to Scott, I think it was?
Scott Quallik?
Yeah. And he told me, he mentioned maybe out by behind Rocky Mountain Equipment where the old municipal dump used to be, that area there, which is kind of close to where the hospital was going. So, if anybody was in a hospital and, you know, if they wanted to see their pet for a couple hours, they're out of access, like they're allowed to be outside and to see their pet for an hour, so you just take it over there and let them see it, you know?
So, just, just out of curiosity, like some of these other communities you mentioned, is, is that privately run or are those...
Yeah, they're privately run, they're privately run.
So, the town...
But I know the one, like Port McMurray has a shelter. It's not really a kennel, it's a shelter, right? It's more like adoptions and stuff like that. But it's municipally run, it's all nonprofit and charity, so... Something, I don't know. If you guys wanted to maybe look into it, I don't know, I'm just here to put a suggestion forward. How many of you have pets at home? Just out of curiosity. Okay, and what do you do if your pet, if you have to go away on holidays?
I have somebody hired to come in and feed them.
Yeah, okay, but...
Yeah.
What if they're not available, then what do you do?
Don't go.
Yeah.
Or take them with me.
Maybe you could, yeah. No, I don't know. I just seem to think there's a need for it in town here. Might feel a need, I don't know, but... Like, I've noticed that there's a lot of employees from High Life that have, are getting dogs and cats now, and if they want to go back to the Philippines, they're all looking to see family, then what do they do with theirs? Right? My first thought was maybe six spaces for dogs, six spaces for cats. That might be a little bit much, but I think, I'm pretty sure even if you have the six spaces available, you probably find it maybe busy most of the time.
I think it's a great idea for a business for somebody.
There's near Kat, uh, one of these just southeast of Nequa, a couple miles.
What's that?
Thought there was one southeast of Nequa, a couple...
Uh, Turner's used to have one.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they're still doing that anymore, I don't think, are they? Like, I know there's a PNR Rescue, but that's cats only, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not, yeah. But this is a spot for, like, somebody wants to go away on holidays, or somebody that can look a spot to be the dog for a week or so and kind of take it care of. And for people in the hospital, it's a lot less stress knowing that your pet is being looked after while you're being looked after, so... I don't know, it's just a thought. I just figured I'd bring it to you guys, and you can run with it.
It's certainly a need.
Yes.
It is a need, yeah.
It's good too that you're highlighting the need, because I can tell you, I struggle with finding a kennel for my dog all the time, so... And you can make good money, so I definitely see someone taking it on as a business.
But has to be properly zoned, like, I mean, there's plenty of zoning issues for that. That has to be researched.
It's only permitted in the agricultural overall zone. It's a conditional use in the industrial heavy and the AR one and ARC. It is not permitted anywhere in residential or the commercial center, commercial highway, or light industrial. So, there are no actions.
What she said.
There's areas for it, just ask...
There's areas for it.
Yeah, I'd definitely say next step for you, Blair, would be to contact Marilyn and take them to find this other...
With the Economic Development Officer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, good direction.
Okay.
Because, you know, a group of people who have signed their, obviously, town homeowners, you know, they can form a, a group, limited shareholders or whatever, and do a group effort to put an entity together.
Okay.
I guess you just need somebody like yourself to direct it.
Okay. Well, I could just, should probably just go through the Dog Park Association too and get there and...
Yeah?
Yeah, it's a good idea, it's a good idea.
So, no, like, I posted that questionnaire that you had around there, like, I posted it out on their Facebook page, and I could add over a hundred likes on it for the people saying it. The like is the same as a digital signature now, according to the court, technically, so... Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much, that's...
Okay, well, thank you for giving me a bit of time here.
Yeah.
Yep. And I think if you guys wanted to just put something out there in your Facebook page, you just asked about it too, see if there's people wanted, if there was, felt there was a need for it in town, and if you could give an answer too. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks.
Have a good evening, everybody.
You too.
Okay, uh, well, continuation of council reports. Deputy Mayor Parrott here with him.
Okay, well, I love, CEO's gonna talk about this, but yesterday, um... Between Jeff Braun, Scott Quallik, our, from our planning office and State House and Tishon, we created, they went through the North Second Slank for zoning bylaws. Uh, so there was, uh, they're doing a review when they're gonna have a new one built, and it affects Nequa because we are, uh, enclosed on three sides by North Second Slank. And then going through the document, six pages of concerns were created, and not concerns that things are being put in the wrong spot, but just that there needs to be compatibility with their new zoning bylaws to, uh, align with what is currently existing and should be existing, uh, in the parameters of Nequa. So, it was very well presented and very well received by North Second Slankford, and they are now moving forward adjourned to be working on the document in unison to make it work out nicely. So, that was good, and I really congratulate our staff on that. Economic Development Officer Marilyn Crew organized a children's business fair, and there were lots of little supporters on that, as well as Matt Coe. And they had twenty tables set up there, and it was an amazing thing, and I bought a bracelet. And one of the groups, I might have this wrong, but one of the groups sold out, like, pretty well right away with whatever they're selling, I think with Dreamcatchers. Another group sold over four hundred dollars worth of stuff right away. But it was around thirty-five hundred dollars worth of stuff that was sold, and it was an incredible event. They even, uh, there was a marketing executive in from Brandon, who was invited to go there and tour around, so that executive is coming back next week and having coffee with Economic Development Office. So, that was a good win-win for Nequa. And I went on a state date, this everybody knows, four H judging. It was friggin' awesome. Some of the kids I actually taught, but four H is, uh, this organization, it was, you know, paddle, and it was like four days up there, but part of it was feeding, feeding meat. And there were twelve groups and teams from little kids right up to adults, and they provided meals, and there were, I think, probably eight judges or six judges or something, and they, we taste tested three meals, their presentation, the whole bit, and all I can say is they fed me well, the food was phenomenal. But what those kids learned and the interaction between those kids, that four H program is phenomenal. So, I just wanted to give kudos to that. And one of the leaders is our Dallas Robertson, works for Town Hall. So, I'm done.
And anyone else? Councillor Sicily?
Um, I have quite a bit. There's, there's been a lot that happens when you, when you meet. I'm trying to remember my... Glow Swim, uh, which was last Saturday night, was a huge success. There was over a hundred and seventy kids that ended up at the pool. They were walking down there, just beforehand, they were walking down, and they were lined up out to the street, which was awesome to see, and they were so excited. There was three hundred glow sticks that were in the pool at the start of the swim, and at the end, they were thinking the light birds are gonna have to go in and get a whole pile of them. There was eight glow sticks left in the pool, so the kids enjoyed them and, and took a haul home, so... Um, it sounds like the feedback from it was amazing, and the possibilities for future years is, is going to be... Uh, we had the recreation barbecue, we were finally able to have it on August first. Uh, it was a lot of fun, uh, you know, thanks to Councillor Parrot and him drawing people in, and Mayor Headley, it was a lot of fun. We were inside, got to talk. Daryl did a great job talking about all of the rec that's been going on in town, what was implemented from the Recreation Master Plan and the community wish list, so it was great to celebrate that with everyone. Murray touched on the children's business fair. There was twenty youth businesses involved in that, and the, the exact number was three thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents is what was spent at the kids, the kids booths, and well received. I think it'll be probably doubled in size next time Marilyn has one of those. It was, and the kids were great. I know Yellowhead is very interested in having Hadley Ferguson do a cotton candy that we can sell a lot of theirs, so... That poor girl. Between the lineup for the Co-op burgers, which, thanks for Co-op for being there, the burgers were amazing, again, but between the lineup for the burgers and the lineup for Hadley, she went three hours straight making cotton candy, and she would not let her mom do it because it was supposed to be her, because it was a children's business. So, it was priceless, but it was great. Plans are underway for the twenty twenty-three What's the Big Idea event on October twelfth at the Legion. There are cash prizes for your good business ideas, so please contact Marilyn at the Town Office to learn more. What's the Big Idea is, is free for the public to attend as well, so if you want to learn about new businesses in the area, please mark October twelfth on your calendar and head down to Legion. There is a babysitting course that Nicole is back, she was back on Monday, Nicole Cooper, our rec director. She is off her mat leave now, so she's already planning stuff. So, Tuesday, October third, there is a babysitting course that you can register at the Town Office for. Handyman, um, Feel Good Day is coming up on September nineteenth. This is a huge fundraiser. Nequa Gladstone Co-op has selected Handyman as one of the participants in it, so I believe it's ten cents a liter that is donated to the charity or to the organization, so please come out for the barbecue that day and fuel up while you're there. I think that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Sicily. Councillor Madol.
Maybe I should have went first, because I can talk. No, a couple of my meetings, because it's summer, they got canceled just because a lot of members are farmers, and, you know, it's understandable. You've only got so many days of good weather to get out there, and especially with hay and stuff. But one meeting that I did attend recently was on July twenty-fifth. It was a Yellowhead meeting, and just a couple, uh, just a couple points. The plant has started, so you might already see that the ice is being made, getting it ready to go. Our Director of Operations there, Lindsay DeHolis, she has moved on to some other things, so we have a new director, and the new director, publicly, I can publicly say. Congratulations to...
Thank you.
A fellow councillor, Yvonne Sicily. And they, they ran a day camp at the Yellowhead this summer, so they had six weeks of day camp. So, that was really well received from those that did it. And the only other highlight to really inform them is the council about is the fact that the Yellowhead Board has decided not to pursue leasing out the canteen. So, we're gonna continue operating the canteen ourselves and, and try some new models, maybe, that some people have some ideas with. So, uh, those are the highlights from our meeting.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Madol. Councillor Gerard.
August second, Nequa County Courthouse, we met. Uh, we were to discuss an urgency repairs for the facility. We had to get these motions passed because we are right now working on one of the three air conditioners that's running the building right now. Um, we are also going to be exploring some short-term fixes on heat. We've had a couple of instances last year where we lost water. When we lost water, that created problems with the boiler system, and it had us restarting boilers and some fairly costly repairs, so we've engaged a couple people to look at the long-term repairs on that. On top of that, we've had some discussions regarding the twenty twenty-four budget were discussed as well, and how cost sharing that could look going forward for the County Courthouse for twenty twenty-four, so...
Yes, beautiful building, but definitely, uh, it's, it's an older building.
Oh, I'm gonna say, Mary.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we will move on to Manager of Operations, Denise.
Thank you. Uh, so today, I have a meeting, but one of them was a site construction meeting for the old RCMP building, which is a new training facility. Uh, and we can see that they've started, they started framing, roof wrappers came in, and they've got that wrapped up, so it's kind of a semi waterproof stage right now, and it'll be scheduled shortly in a short coming days, I guess, once they have some other natural items narrowed down. Uh, the interior's framing, like I said, it's coming along really good. Uh, I think what we're roughing is supposed to be optimistically late this week, early next week. Like I said, everything's, it's moving along. It's nice to see a building come to shape out there, so... Uh, the Park Lake project also had that construction meeting today. Things are moving along there as well. Uh, they started, they should have completed the deep soil mixing, so I've got the deep keyway that's going well below the dam structure. That should be wrapped up today, and the clay compaction, the internal key, is being packed and working its way up, so that's coming along. They should also be pouring concrete in the first section, uh, this week, if not next week, because I'll be wondering whether it rolls up nice. Massive pour for one section will be a full day of pouring, so it's a lot of concrete flowing in that place. Quite neat to see, as they have to have cooling lines and temperature sensors and everything else integrated into the floor. Uh, Lagoon, we'll be having a meeting shortly on that one, so I don't really have an update, but from the last site this weekend there, there was, uh, good progress on way, so I'm excited to see the next progress, our next meeting there, see what's going on, how things are moving along. Uh, and as we have noticed, it's locally, we've seen a lot of patching happening around town. Uh, contractor is still working and still bouncing around, uh, as is our concrete contractor. Uh, they're coming and going, working on some of our sidewalk repairs around town, practice for approaches and utility cuts, so everything's coming along.
Okay, any questions, something?
I was just, I was just gonna touch on, it's great information you've provided on Park Lake, and for the residents that wanna see what's going on, the place they can view it is from the old lookout on the west side of the, by the bird sanctuary, not by walking on a lake bed. I'm getting tired of seeing residents walking out, cycling out to go see that area, and especially now that the construction crews are working longer hours.
It's, it's a tremendously busy site. It's also a very, very dirty site. Site has been used as a garbage dump for decades.
Decades.
On these here banks, all that material's mixed in. There's glass everywhere, there's steel sticking up everywhere. It's incredibly dangerous. Please do not go down there. Again, lots of contractors working late hours, seven days a week sometimes, so there's no guarantee that someone's not working there. Please stay off the site.
Yeah, there is a, uh, there is a great place to view the, where the spillway is gonna be, and it's right by the old bird, it's right by the bird sanctuary.
Yeah.
And you can walk there, and you can see full southern side of where that's gonna be, and it's perfectly safe. The other one I just questioned on, and I've mentioned by some of the people that are using the Hillcrest area, the beach volleyball courts, complaining that it's severely compacted. I wasn't sure if there's an opportunity that it could get loosened up again. It's more like a, it's more like a paved pad right now, when I went up and walked it myself. It's, uh, if it can be tilled or anything, it's not beach volleyball anymore.
I'll request that Matt can go though, if there's tiller being worked up.
But your, your courts are being used a lot, for transparency.
For business owners in town, but perhaps even residents who have asphalt areas in their business, do they have, do you have a contact that they might use for those that are in town for whoever?
Uh, they just have to look up the profile, and they may not be able to use them. Like I said, they're getting pretty bucked up already, but yeah. Either profile or is that a bit of the two local contractors that are utilizing this here?
Denise, I had a couple of residents asking about watering the flats during, you know, such a dry spell on that. My comment was, you know, that they, that they have to keep them in shape for the kids for fall sports and that are coming up here right away, but I thought I'd just double check with you.
Yeah, we also monitor our water usage internally. If we see anything that's, we're struggling to make water, uh, when we note that we see high resident usage and then also internal usage through their businesses or industry, at that time, we dial back, but we still feel we've got sufficient water that we can enable us to still water these spaces.
Okay, any other questions, Denise? If not, thank you. Colleen, Correspondents, Manitoba Justice.
Uh, so this was a little piece of correspondence on July twenty-sixth. I'm pleased to provide you with additional details on provincial funding to support public safety in the town of Nequa for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. This year, Manitoba Justice will provide an increased urban policing grant funding to municipalities. Manitoba government has committed additional funding to support municipalities impacted by increased policing costs resulting from rising rates of crime and inflationary pressures. The additional investment reflects a revised per capita calculation aligned with the two thousand twenty-one census data and an overall twenty-eight percent funding increase. So, Nequa will be eligible to receive in total eight hundred eighteen thousand one hundred twenty dollars of urban policing grant funding in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. This amount reflects an increase of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars over previous years, and builds on other government initiatives, including the policing and public safety strategy and body crime strategy to support law enforcement and improve public safety in our province. So, that was a welcome increase, which we did not budget for, and takes a lot of pressure off the cost of revamping the old RCMP building to create that training center. As much as we could afford it, and we were, we were able to do so, uh, this was nice to see coming into the budget this year, for sure.
On top of the pay increase, and the new body cameras that are turning in costs.
It was nice.
Financials. So, I guess we are looking at our June financial statement. Uh, everyone should have gone over that already. So, the motion is be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending June thirtieth. Moved by, um, Councillor Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrot. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, and for accounts, being resolved that we approved the accounts for July twenty twenty-three, totaling one million seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents as reviewed and representing checks two oh two three zero one three three zero to two oh two three zero one six oh four, but excluding two oh two three zero one five zero one and two oh two three, uh, two oh two three zero one five two eight. Moved by, uh, Councillor Quonter, seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Councillor Gerard and myself will remove ourselves due to conflict.
Here we have a resolution to be resolved. Okay, with the resolution be resolved, and we approve checks 2023-05, or 01501 and 2023-01528 for July 2023 to Home Hardware Niqwa Gladstone Co-op totaling $9,838.88 of Uber. Counselor Cicely, seconded by Counselor Madol. All those in favor? Carried.
Outstanding utility accounts, Colleen?
So, just part of the regular process, um, following the last time we dealt out utilities, we have a bunch of outstanding accounts, the circuitry in total totaling $6,120.90, and we're asking permission to add those to taxes.
Any questions? If not, my law reads whereas, section 252 of the Municipal Act authorizes a municipality to collect debits and debts in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under the act. And whereas there are outstanding utility charges that remain unpaid and uncollectible, therefore be it resolved that all those utility accounts that remain outstanding as of August 15th, 2023 from the attached list be hereby added to respective property rule. List is attached, moved by Counselor Ponter, seconded by Counselor Cicely. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh, sale of property, Colleen?
Um, so we have an offer. We have this and that manufacturing, um, Korean moment wanting to purchase lot seven of the industrial park for the values posted for sale of $30,000.
Questions? Motion reads be it resolved that we approve the sale of Lot 7, Flound 66188 of Southeast 341415, Row 8956 to this and that manufacturing, Korean moment, for the amount of $30,000 plus any applicable taxes and costs subject to the terms of the developing agreement. Moved by Counselor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. And, uh, water, Manitoba Environment, Climate Drainage, Water Rights.
So this is going to seem a little weird, and this is correct. On September 29th, 2011, um, an application actually went into water rights, Mr. Seki actually filed it, to explore for a water supply located on, located on the northwest 22134, divert groundwater for municipal distribution purposes. And by doing that, a request was made for an additional 250 feet for the town of Niqwa on the Lower Whitebuddy Subbasement, Subbasement, Subbasin of the Cineboy Delta Aquifer. This letter, years later, is to inform us that they found out that there is sufficient water allocation available at this time to begin development of that project. Additional water allocation is being made available on selected subbasins on the ADA as part of a pilot project based on updated app for modeling and work. Uh, we have 30 days to respond to the receiving this later and suggest that we would like to achieve that water allocation. So there is a resolution here from council, but, um, we want to make sure we got it in there, so we did go ahead on your behalf to say that we'll take it. But if you ask the resolution case, they want something official. So this is kind of nice, because as you all know, you know, with our growth here, we have been as part of our planning processes for anywhere from five, 10, 15, 20 years, I was looking at if the aquifer were to dry off, where do we source our water? So we have reached out and we have been in contact with Portage, as was done in previous years. Um, this kind of lessens the necessity to do that. And actually, um, one of the counselors in North Secus Langford yesterday at the table had mentioned that the report had been completed on the Cineboy Aquifer, and that they did find out that there was sufficient water to proceed with some of these allocations. So I'm asking support for a resolution to support.
Well, it's very exciting for us to be able to see this, and, uh, congratulations on your 12-year application. But I'm glad you have 30 days to respond.
How many kids have you had since?
Three, all of them.
Pretty good pre-planning for it. Okay, the motion reads warehouse in September 2011. Niqwa submitted an application for water rights license to explore for water supply located in northwest 221314 to divert groundwater from municipal, uh, distribution, uh, form municipal distribution purposes, and requested an additional 250 feet for the town of Niqwa on the Lower Whitebod East Subbasin of the Cineboy Delta Aquifer. And whereas Niqwa was noted, notified on July 2023 by the Drainage and Water Rights Licensing Branch of Manitoba Environment and Climate, that there is sufficient water, excuse me, allocation available to proceed with this application, and has requested that the town of Niqwa confirm their interest in proceeding. Therefore, be it resolved that the town, that the council of the town of Niqwa hereby acknowledge the notification regarding an increased water allocation and formally confirms their, confirms their intent to proceed. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, and seconded by Counselor Ponter. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, Colleen, maybe I'll get you to explain this a little bit.
So zoning bylaw 3220-23 was a bylaw that was put forward by the name of a fellow named Philip Siklik. He was looking to create a development on a parcel of land that was west of Niqwa Plumbing and Heating. As he proceeded through that development, he actually took this development to second reading of the bylaw, and that's where we sat. Prior to third reading, we required as a council the negotiation of a development agreement. More recently, Mr. Siklik has decided to not proceed with this development, and what has happened now is we have this bylaw sitting on our desk in Niqwa now, whether it should, should proceed or not. My recommendation to council is that if you proceed with third reading on this bylaw, you are altering this piece of property from light industrial to go to, uh, mobile modular home status, which takes away our ability in the future to plan and register as caveat on title a development agreement under the local authority, uh, provisions in the Planning Act. And within the Planning Act, when you create developments in areas where there is no infrastructure and where there is no recreational opportunities or parks or the various amenities that exist in other areas of town, you can negotiate with the developer to either partially pay for those things or contribute somehow to those things. We did not get that far with Mr. Siklik. He just decided to withdraw. So I guess the recommendation of staff here is that you defeat this resolution, leave it as industrial light, and should a further application come forward in the future, whether it be modular, whether it be, um, an industrial use, no matter what the use is, let it go forward based on the merits of a different application. Then it still gives you the opportunity to negotiate under the Planning Act for an agreement that would satisfy all provisions of making sure infrastructure was there, and that the benefitter of that infrastructure paid proportionately to that infrastructure. So I'm asking for you to defeat.
Okay, so any other questions, Colleen? That's clear? Okay, so the motion reads be it resolved that bylaw number 3220-23 be the bylaw of the town of Niqwa to amend zoning bylaw 3184-18 be now read for the third time and passed. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Cicely. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion is defeated. Okay, um, other business, Colleen?
I don't think I've heard of any unless there's questions.
Any questions? Is there other business?
I just wanted to actually put out a congratulations to Hidden Hollow. Uh, their grand opening was today.
Nice touches.
And they utilized the storefront improvement program to help with the amazing transformation of, of that business. So if anybody hasn't been down there, you need to go see it.
Yeah, yeah, beautiful place. That's right. Okay, seen in no other. Be it resolved that the council of town of Niqwa do now adjourn this regular meeting at 7:41. Moved by Counselor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Counselor Madol. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.